That means you're, uh, don't have it on and the folks at home can't hear anything you're saying.
Okay.
All right, we will call to order our seventh annual Physics Day, or Civics Day, excuse me, not Physics Day. Uh, we'll do parallels later. Our Civics Day Wave Two, where we will actually do the voting. Uh, first, Madam Clerk, may I have a rule call?
Ava Adlam. Morgan Barlow. Evan Chen. Bowen Everett. Julian Fardo. Rocco Lancher. Evelyn Hale. Tigran Aspiron. Ricky Jones. Stefan Lozadovic. Grady Loops. Ryan Souter. Ally Stevenson. Carter Williamson. If you can submerge in his presence.
All right, and with that, we will pledge allegiance. If y'all please raise your flag. All right, thank you. All right, today we're gonna vote, and in order to avoid last year's manipulation, and as the mayor pro tem so succinctly put it, the survivor-style tactical voting, we will have a slight change in modification, which we will review in a second. City Manager, do you have any comments before we get going?
Um, just, uh, Mayor, thank you, and thank you to the students and the class, looking forward to your presentations. Um, Ally was sitting here a few minutes ago when I said you're on the hot seat as the city manager, and I don't know where she went. Oh, there you go. But anyway, uh, looking forward to the presentation. I want to compliment the class on a very difficult topic. Uh, as we shared when you first started, the updating of the, the land use element of the general plan is a huge undertaking. I mean, we're, we've embarked on maybe an eighteen-month process right now, uh, as, as a staff. But for you guys to take that on in such a short period of time, looking forward to it, and again, I compliment you on taking on such a difficult project, looking forward to it.
Uh, to belabor that slightly, the eighteen-month, the average cost of a land use piece is about two million dollars per square mile, give or take. So eighteen months for us will come in over six and a half million dollars to try and redo it. Uh, and it goes deep into different uses, transit elements, uh, environmental impacts and things like that. So, any free labor we can get from you, we'll take. All right, over to you, explain the rules of the game.
So, just so everybody knows the rules of the game, we're gonna show each video. The videos have been randomly drawn in order. We rolled dice to see which ones go first and last. Um, after the video is shown, there'll be seven minutes. The city clerk will have a timer, um, of Q and A, where we will go from one side to the other. Anybody who wants to ask a question can ask. You, you don't get any follow-up questions. We're gonna limit it to one because it's gonna take the seven minutes for you guys to do that. Okay, so no follow-up questions, one question at a time. Um, and then after we're all done presenting all five, I'm sorry, there's five this year, and we had an extra government class, um, then we're gonna vote. Um, the voting this year, I made ballots for each period, so I have period one ballots. I'll hand those to the period one leaders at the end. They cannot vote for their own class. So they have to vote for somebody else's project. All of the city council members will also get a ballot. The city manager and the city clerk will also be voting in the end. There's no names on them, so I'll, I'll tally them and I'll read them off and they'll tally them, and we'll see what happens. If there's a tie, I have a solution for that too. Uh, but I think if the mayor is leaving, which he just did, um, I think it's an odd number, so I don't think we'll have a tie.
Perfect.
So, everybody understand the rules? Fabulous.
From period one, we are here today to propose thoughtful and realistic ideas for the rezoning of our city, with the goal of promoting balanced growth, preserving community character, and meeting the evolving needs of El Segundo residents over the next twenty to thirty years.
To focus on the nuances of the city with greater detail, five of our groups have focused plans for smaller sections of El Segundo, as seen by the five red circles, beginning with the northern residential area highlighted in yellow.
This part of town is especially important as it captures El Segundo's close-knit community character, something residents deeply value. Our group focused on maintaining that identity while planning for future population growth and evolving housing needs over the next thirty years.
With that in mind, our first proposal aims to rezone the commercial area along East Imperial Avenue into mixed use, allowing for both residential and commercial development in the same building. Some of the businesses that currently reside along this street include Raycom Data Technologies, Orozzi Enterprises, Inc., Metro Video Systems, Inc., Polaris Electric, and more. We feel like this area would be a great space for mixed use for various reasons.
First, this stretch of East Imperial Avenue is located just off the one oh five and is in extremely close proximity to LAX, making it an ideal location for housing airport employees. Rezoning this area to mixed use would also boost foot traffic, support housing diversity, and enhance livability for El Segundo residents. Currently, many of the businesses in the zone operate more like office spaces, so we definitely like to encourage and advertise the addition of more active, street-friendly storefronts to better engage the community. When we polled over a hundred fifty residents of El Segundo, we asked them, how would you rate the current usefulness or vibrancy of the buildings along Imperial Highway near the freeway? Our responses came back with an average rating of two point one five out of five. With its visibility from the freeway and adjacency to the Embassy Suites Hotel, this area has strong potential to become a more attractive and vibrant gateway into the city.
Our second proposal focuses on a very similar concept, just a different area along East Imperial Avenue. The small plaza that contains Lucky's Donuts, L and L Hawaiian BBQ, and Subway is currently zoned as general commercial, but we would also like to rezone this area as mixed use.
This location is not only just off the one oh five, but also situated along Main Street, making it the prime gateway to draw visitors into the city while staying well-connected to local residents. Similar to the plaza directly adjacent to it, we hope to encourage more foot traffic and business. According to our poll data, residents rated their satisfaction with the availability of businesses within walking distance at a three point seven five out of five. This indicates a strong appreciation for local amenities and supports the case for pursuing mixed-use development. Rather than eliminating businesses to create space for housing, a combined approach that integrates both residential and commercial spaces would better serve the community needs, offering the best of both worlds. Now, to complement El Segundo's shift towards a more walkable, mixed-use urban layout, the city could implement an east-side circulator bus network that loops between the commercial zones east of Sepulveda and the revitalized downtown core. Connecting key corridors like Mariposa, Pacific Coast Highway, El Segundo Boulevard, and Main Street, the route would link office-heavy areas with pedestrian-friendly retail and civic destinations. By offering reliable service during peak times, the circulator could boost lunchtime foot traffic as workers explore downtown shops, restaurants, and services. Combined with transit-oriented zoning reforms, this system could reduce car dependency, ease congestion, and foster vibrant accessible neighborhoods. Now moving on to the southeast zone of El Segundo, which resides east of Pacific Coast Highway and is one of the most underutilized yet high-potential areas in the city. Right now, southeast El Segundo includes Topgolf, Raytheon Space and Airborne Systems, the Lakes Golf Course, The Point, Plaza El Segundo, and other small businesses. Southeast El Segundo is mostly business and industry-oriented. As of now, in southeast El Segundo, the twenty twenty-four zoning amendment permits the development of data centers, research laboratories, light industrial facilities, and associated parking structures. These uses are intended to support the area's growth as a commercial and technology-focused corridor. However, the amendment explicitly prohibits residential housing, gas stations, and waste storage facilities in an effort to preserve land for employment-generating uses and minimize environmental and traffic impacts. Southeast El Segundo generates ninety percent of the city's business tax, which is critical for funding services without burdening residents. But office space demand has dropped post-COVID, and companies now struggle to attract young professionals due to a lack of nearby housing and services. We decided to send out a poll to residents of El Segundo, asking their opinions on housing options and other commercial buildings, so that we could implement them into our three zoning solutions. Here are our three zoning solutions for the southeast part of El Segundo. First, we plan to rezone Coral Circle to heavy industry, to attract larger aerospace or clean tech companies who need bigger and more secure spaces. After driving around there ourselves, we found that there were many abandoned buildings that these bigger industries and aerospace companies would love to have as office space, or even warehouses. Our second zoning solution takes place at Plaza El Segundo. We plan to rezone the buildings currently at Plaza El Segundo to allow mixed-use buildings, so we can add residential areas on the top of them. Due to the fact that there is already office space on the opposite side of Plaza El Segundo, we believe residential would fit the best, so that businesses can have places for their employees to be housed. Lastly, we want to change the Raytheon-specific zoning plan put in place by the city to allow residential housing space. According to Lance Jarrow, Raytheon has been advocating for housing on their premises for their employees for a long period of time.
Next section of zoning we will be focusing on is the downtown area of El Segundo. There's already an existing plan taking place downtown, which is split into four different sub-plans, with one being located in the Grand Avenue District. This is where our first proposal resides, in which we would like to propose to rezone a specific parking lot where Rite Aid is currently located. This also includes a fenced-off area with nothing but dirt and grass inside, as this area is the remains of the hummus factory and a laundromat. We would like to explicitly rezone this area into urban mixed use, adding more housing and quartering options along Grand Avenue. Our vision is to transform Grand Avenue into a vibrant and more friendly area to keep more people to benefit the stores and businesses in this area. Our polls indicate parking is most needed in the northern part of downtown and not on Grand Avenue, so rezoning this lot will not be an issue among the people. Our second proposal focuses on revitalizing a section of South Richmond Street by rezoning a currently underutilized parking lot from parking use to commercial use. This particular parking lot remains mostly empty throughout the day and is surrounded by several alternative parking options, including spaces directly adjacent to it. We want to emphasize that our recommendation is limited to just one block on Richmond Street, and we are not proposing any changes to any nearby parking zones. By converting this space to commercial use, we see an opportunity to bring more vibrancy and economic activity to the southern edge of downtown. A commercial building can serve as a valuable addition, attracting foot traffic and supporting local businesses, all while taking advantage of the ample parking that already exists nearby. There's one discrepancy, though, which is this lot is owned by Chevron, so the city will have to work it out with Chevron to implement this plan. Our third and final proposal is to transform all the buildings on Main Street into urban mixed use. These changes will be implemented from Mariposa Avenue going down to Grand Avenue. This kind of development boosts foot traffic for local businesses, and it creates more housing options and also makes better use of underutilized space. When people live above or near shops and restaurants, they spend more time and money locally, keeping our small-town charm while supporting economic growth. Our vision is to attract tourists and add-on places to stay for upcoming sporting events in Los Angeles, such as the World Cup and the twenty twenty-eight Winter Olympics. We would like to implement vertically-integrated hotels into these urban mixed-use areas on Main, so El Segundo would have more tourists, which would lead to better economic growth for both the city and businesses. Our polls also indicate that most of the people are in favor of this decision, with only eight point six percent of people feeling very weak and two point nine percent feeling weak about the decision.
Sign to. We reassigned the northeast area of El Segundo, which spanned from Washington Street to Aviation Boulevard and was in between Imperial Highway and El Segundo Boulevard. Seventy percent of participants described this area as primarily corporate-based, containing large businesses like real estate firms, law offices, or medical and dental clinics. We then showed the participants a number of images containing abandoned or unused buildings and an underutilized parking lot. We then asked the participants what they would prefer these spaces be turned into, and roughly eighty percent of our participants wanted to see these spaces turn into mixed-use, green spaces, housing, or commercial areas. Now we want to go into further depth about the ideas we have for rezoning some of the spaces.
We first proposed rezoning the vacant buildings, including the Boeing Building along Pacific Coast Highway, into a vibrant mixed-use area that meets El Segundo's growing needs, without displacing any residents or businesses. This site presents an opportunity to bring new affordable housing, local-serving retail, flexible office space, public gathering areas, and an overall open-air center to one of the city's most visible corridors. By allowing a mixed housing, we can create options for a multitude of new workers looking for affordable housing and to live closer to their jobs, given the surroundings. Zoning is corporate office.
The area is already supported by major roads like Sepulveda and PCH, and has very short walking distance to green spaces like Washington Park, Amínez, and Pacific Coast Highway slash Mariposa bus stop, which is also just down the street, allowing for easy transit to the metro and other areas outside of El Segundo.
There is a parking lot near the Avalon Office Complex adjacent to the campus El Segundo Athletic Field, which is currently underutilized. This zone takes up, uh, about twelve acres of land, and its current zone and zone code is labeled as Corporate Campus Specific Plan. The address on Google Maps for this field is twenty-two oh one E Mariposa Avenue. Observation indicates that the parking availability is significantly exceeds actual demand, particularly on weekends and during office hours. To better align that use with community needs, propose rezoning a portion of this lot from commercial parking used to public green space or recreation use. This would enable the city to expand the adjacent athletic fields or transform the space into a landscape park-like environment. Such a change would not only enhance current community access to open green areas, but also create long-term opportunities for creation, development, and public well-being.
Smoky Hollow, the industrial and creative hub of El Segundo, currently remains unexplored by seventy-five percent of its residents. Our plan aims to flip the statistic by turning Smoky Hollow into a vibrant district where living, working, and innovation come together. We want to transform the area between Maine and Maryland by rezoning that area to allow for mixed-use buildings. The first floors will house existing businesses in addition to new artisan-maker spaces like woodworking and small-scale production, while the second floors will feature loft-style apartments for young professionals looking to work and live in the same neighborhood. Next, the business district from Oregon to PCH. This area is already a hub of activity, and we want to keep it that way. Finally, we want to add an area for public facilities and other businesses that may serve the whole community. Possible businesses that we would market towards are gyms, mental health resources, childcare for local workers, and a dynamic workspace. Additionally, we want to rezone this area to allow for restaurants to bring in more people to Smoky Hollow.
Let's talk about pedestrian life in Smoky Hollow. First, we'd like to enhance the sidewalks and streets. We propose that we expand narrow sidewalks, as well as adding greenery, benches, and lighting to make walking safer and more enjoyable. On the bottom left is Franklin Street before our changes, and on the right is what it could look like afterwards. Second, we would like to create pedestrian-only zones. We would designate certain streets with set hours as traffic-free to prioritize foot traffic, street life, and more. We could close Oregon Street from cars from four to eight PM on weekends and invite pedestrians with food trucks, music, and local vendors. Third, we would like to install better crosswalks and traffic management. This would include adding more crosswalks, pedestrian signals, and extension to curbs. We could add a raised crosswalk at the intersection of Franklin Avenue and Ugliput Strive. Lastly, we want to encourage more ground-level integration. Redesigning stores, cafes, and other businesses with transparent windows and outdoor seating will attract many more people to the area. We could also install large murals celebrating El Segundo's aerospace history on any industrial wall along Marineland Street.
Our plan reimagines Smoky Hollow as a sustainable, vibrant part of El Segundo. We'll partner with eco-friendly builders like Homer New Three Sixty and EcoSmart to create green homes and businesses, to bring in bookstores, affordable housing, and popular restaurants. We'll offer leasing incentives and promote the area through social media and local news. Mixed-use buildings will feature solar panels, rooftop gardens, coffee shops, studio rentals, and healthy dining like Sweetgreen. A key focus is revitalizing Wiley Park. Seventy percent of our survey respondents didn't know it existed. We'll add a community garden, benches, and clear signage to make a more welcoming, active space. To support sustainability, we'll apply for green grants from the state and utilities like SoCal Gas and Southern California Edison. Sidewalks, bike lanes, murals, and signage will better connect Smoky Hollow to downtown, blending sustainability, creativity, and community growth.
As for marketing, large digital screens on buildings or busy intersections will rotate ads for multiple businesses, a cost-effective, high-impact solution ensuring all-day visibility. A central community board or kiosk will serve as a hub for news, events, and special offers. Engage people where they walk. We'll partner with businesses to display branded window decals and eye-catching graphics, encouraging mutual promotion. On sidewalks, removable chalk and vinyl graphics will guide foot traffic, create photo ops, and spotlight featured stores. Street furniture, bike racks, benches, trash bins can be tastefully branded for ongoing visibility in unexpected places. Above-street level, banners and flags on poles or overhands will add seasonal flair and highlight local businesses. We will also collaborate with artists and property owners to create murals or painted-wall ads that blend storytelling, art, and advertising. Micro events like sidewalk sales, tastings, or pop-up performances will bring the community together while allowing co-promotion. Pop-up ads and booths will offer interactive brand moments from demos and giveaways to live showcases.
At the eastern gateway to Smoky Hollow, specifically around fifteen twenty-one East Grand Avenue, there's an existing parking structure that's underutilized and underpromoted. Rather than immediately building something new, we should first ask, are people even aware this garage exists? Is it easy to find? And does signage make it obvious that it's public and available? In most cases, the answer is no. With minimal investment in wayfinding, signage, digital map integration like Google Maps and Waze, and street-level markers, we can make this parking structure more visible and more inviting. This alone can drive noticeable increase in visitor traffic and business footfall. Here's what we can do to accomplish this. Implement strategic two-hour parking zones to encourage turnover, improve curb markings and signage so that available spaces are easy to identify, restrip faded zones and add night-visible reflectors to optimize use, evaluate potential and angled parking on wider streets to increase net space.
I'm gonna interrupt one quick minute before we do the Q and A. I neglected, when I came up first, to thank the mayor and the city council, the city manager, the city clerk, and all of the department heads from the city of El Segundo for helping with this project and participating. And I'd also like to thank the El Segundo School Board members, um, that are here today, as well as our superintendent and our principal from the high school, and all the support that all of you have given to the students in, in, before, after, during this project. So, I neglected to say that earlier. I also wanted to remind you that, um, this is the first project where we have encouraged the use of AI. So I'm, I'm sure you noticed some of the AI-generated photos and, and images and stuff, um, as well as they got ideas and information and stuff from that as well. So, I, I, I wanted to mention, we've been trying to incorporate that into our curriculum, and this is a big way for us to do that. All right, we're ready for Q and A. Period one, your committee chairs need to come on up.
Seven minutes are, uh, start beginning for Q and A.
So should we start at this end of the dais and work our way down with questions? Oh, you're period one? Are you guys all period one? All right. Mr. Williamson? You don't have any questions?
Good morning, period one. I really liked the idea that you guys proposed in regards to the, um, revitalization on East Imperial Avenue with all the housing, as well as in, um, Main Street downtown with the addition of hotels. My main question was, though, what I didn't find too clear in the video- My main question was though, what I didn't find too clear in the video. How will you manage the traffic congestion that's gonna recur because of this? A lot of people come from the highway into El Segundo, which is on the stretch. Of East Imperial Avenue. With the addition of housing, there's gonna be more people flowing through there in general. And along with that, you're gonna need more parking spaces as well. How will you combat this?
Uh we haven't thought of this, but most. Uh but we could propose making uh a third lane down Main Street and revitalizing different areas for more parking.
Um so you guys talked about um like the aspect you want businesses to have on Smoky Hollow, like transparent windows. And murals. But since we could just rezone it, how are you gonna encourage businesses to actually implement those changes?
I think that ultimately it's up to the businesses, but we want the businesses coming in to already know that. Or the main aim of Smoky Hollow is to be an inviting and like welcoming and walkable s- uh place. So the businesses that would actually be there would already know um the main goal of the environment that we're trying to cre- create.
You guys did amazing. I thought it was really amazing. I just have one piece of constructive criticism, really. Um whenever you would put like, I guess a chart, it would have been nice to see the question that you asked instead of just showing data.
Um so you guys had a lot of changes that you brought to the city, a lot of new zoning laws and a lot of multi-use. And so I was just wondering, are you suggesting that El Segundo should go from uh a small town to something bigger and brighter? Is that the change you guys are suggesting?
Uh so you guys talked about adding a hotel on Main Street. How do you think the community re- would react to having a hotel on Main Street? And also where would you put it? And like, how could you justify that major change?
Uh we think the community would be in favor of it because, especially the businesses, because it would bring more circulation and economic growth. And how will we implement it? Uh for the mixed-use buildings, we would put it sort of on top of the businesses, sort of like a like a mixed-use building. So yeah.
Ho- how would you incentivize businesses to allow you to put like multi-use buildings on top of their business?
More economic circulation, more people means more customers, so yeah.
Um you guys mentioned something about um adding, making the Chevron parking structure public. Um but you said something about working it out. I wasn't really sure what that would entail.
That would be like city council and not us, but. But yeah.
All right, uh you used. You use mixed zone um or mixed-use buildings a lot as a solution to many of the problems that you find within the city. Uh what was your thought process for deciding that mixed-use buildings were a very good solution in the city? And why they so, why to you are they such a desirable solution for what you're trying to accomplish?
Um so we decided that mixed use for my section, which is the southeast campus of El Segundo, we decided that mixed use were the best. Because there are already a lot of small businesses there, especially in the works and the Plaza El Segundo. And we believe that just getting rid of those businesses, adding like only residential, only office space would kind of like limit economic growth. We feel that keeping those small businesses would be a lot greater of a solution.
Uh could we hear from Darrison as well?
Uh we feel like mixed use would be the most versatile and the most uh. The the best beneficial for economic growth and sustainability.
Um I think like mixed use was important because it helps ease the housing crisis, but also keeps small businesses.
Any follow-up questions from the dais? Thank you, period one. You guys covered a lot of ground.
All right, here we go.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our class's civics project. We are proud to present the innovative solutions that we have had the chance to come up with in the past few weeks. Regarding El Segundo's general plan, our class devised a five-committee operation. Each tasked with the certain areas of the city, each cooperating to rework the zoning laws and systems set in place. The overarching goal we've held in consideration is the following. What will El Segundo need in the next twenty to twenty-five years? To put forward more clearly what we're attempting to accomplish, we will explore issues regarding conflicts our city faces today. What areas need most renovation and finally, what solutions will be implemented in response to these issues?
Our area is a mixed-use red zone on the outskirts of downtown El Segundo. It has been modernized with corporate buildings like Boeing, Raytheon, and aerospace corporations. As well as an office space for companies like the Los Angeles Times. Dining options include spots like Starbucks and Subway, making the area convenient for workers and visitors. These businesses and amenities make the area a strong candidate for adding new housing. To support a growing workforce and create a more balanced life-work community.
We're proposing a long-term housing plan for the east side of El Segundo past P C H. The goal is to rezone parts of the industrial area to allow mixed-use buildings with shops for small businesses on the ground floor and affordable apartments above. We'd use cost-effective construction methods to keep rents reasonable, making it easier for people ju- just starting out. Like recent college graduates and young professionals to live here. To make space, we'd focus on empty buildings and unused lots. We'd offer buy-back programs or add vacancy taxes to encourage property owners to sell or de- redevelop. Then we'd partner with developers who are willing to keep housing affordable and invest in the community. This plan helps El Segundo grow in a way that's practical, inclusive, and built for the future.
Mixed-use buildings would include street-level retail or cafes to support local businesses and create vibrant walkable neighborhoods. Developers would enter into community benefit agreements to ensure long-term affordability and invest in local infrastructure and services. We would try to incentivize developers to build in this area by offering streamlined permitting, tax breaks, and density bonuses. In exchange for long-term affordability commitments and community investments.
Our proposed affordable housing near the metro line offers major benefits by reducing reliance on cars. Cutting transportation costs and making commutes shorter and more predictable. It also improves access to jobs, schools, and essential services, boosting quality of life and economic stability for residents.
From a community view perspective, concentrating affordable housing near metro line supports sustainable urban development. By reducing traffic congestion, lowering greenhouse gas emissions, and encouraging walkable transit-oriented neighborhoods. This integration of housing and transportation infrastructure creates more inclusive, connected, and environmentally responsible cities.
One of our focuses was just having more people circulate around the area, whether it's from housing, jobs, or transportation. We focused on adding new businesses to draw in more tourists, using some of the empty buildings over there that we can use. To have more food, places, shops, et cetera, remodeling east of P C H to allow for a new and more pleasing look. Will draw in more people just based on looks. Although there are already a few places over there, no one ever goes to them because they're all hidden by big buildings and not easily ac- accessible. Allowing for more businesses to spread out in every area will allow for more options on places to go. And people have more to do, therefore drawing them in more and making them want to stay longer.
Over the next twenty years, it's crucial to develop new housing in El Segundo as the population is expected to grow by nearly twenty percent. And current housing availability won't meet future demand. To accommodate this growth and attract a more diverse population, the city should prioritize the development of affordable housing options east of P C H.
Having new housing located near the metro line and public bus routes makes it much easier for people who rely on affordable options to get where they need to go. Whether it's work, school, or daily errands, it gives residents more independence and flexibility without needing a car. Also, including popular businesses on the bottom floor of the mixed-use buildings help attract more visitors to El Segundo. It's a smart way to re- revive revitalize the east of P C H. And turn underused areas into more lively, welcoming spaces.
Our proposal for revitalizing Smoky Hollow centers on a balanced, community-first approach. Through affordable housing, local job creation, and public spaces. With community benefit agreements, green building, and public-private partnerships, we'll attract investment while supporting residents and local businesses.
Smoky Hollow has incredible potential, not just for economic growth, but for inclusive, community-first development. This isn't about just adding buildings. It's about creating a thriving neighborhood where people can live, work, and connect.
That's why we're proposing a partnership approach, expedited permitting, and zoning flexibility in exchange for community benefit agreements. These agreements ensure that development directly supports the people who already live here through affordable housing, job training programs, and accessible public spaces. It's a win-win that brings in investment without raising taxes on current residents.
Fund the infrastructure needed like safer streets, green spaces, and smarter public transit. Recommend tax incentives such as tax abatements and tax increment financing. These tools allow us to reinvest future economic gains into today's improvements, protecting existing resources while upgrading the community.
Sustainability is also central in our plan. All new developments will follow green building practices. Prioritizing energy efficiency, water conservation, and long-term environmental health. We're not just building for now, we're building for the future.
Equally important is transparency. Residents, small business owners, and community leaders must be included in the process from the very beginning. We use tools like surveys, focus groups, and town halls to ensure their voices shape the outcomes.
With these changes, Smoky Hollow becomes more than just a development zone. It becomes a model for smart, diverse growth. New mixed-use housing, inviting public spaces, and business opportunities will support both current and future residents alike. Strengthening the neighborhood without displacing it.
We propose building two hundred sixty to two hundred seventy-five apartment units, along with a dedicated urban courtyard as green space. On a forty-eight thousand square foot lot in Smoky Hollow. This six-story mixed-use development will not only provide housing, but also revitalize the area with community-centered amenities. At least twenty percent of the units will be designated as affordable housing. Aligned with Los Angeles County medium-income guidelines. Additionally, we will offer workforce housing for essential workers like teachers, city employees, and service staff. Ensuring that El Segundo remains livable and accessible for the people who serve it every day.
Currently, Smoky Hollow is zoned for industrial use only. To make this project possible, we will seek a rezoning approval to permit residential and mixed-use development. We're committed to complying with all environmental regulations, safety codes, and ensuring infrastructure readiness and collaboration with the city. Our development goes beyond housing. It's about creating a complete neighborhood experience. The ground floor of the buildings will feature commercial spaces totaling approximately thirty-eight thousand square feet, fully dedicated to small local businesses.
We anticipate accommodating approximately ten to twenty-five businesses. These businesses will be selected to support a walkable, service-oriented lifestyle and could include cafes, local restaurants, bike shops, coworking studios. Fitness centers, breweries, and more. This approach will create jobs for local residents, support entrepreneurship, especially among local and minority-owned businesses. Reduce the need for car travel, increasing sustainability, and encourage a vibrant street-level atmosphere. With outdoor seating, public gathering areas, and strong pedestrian access.
We draw inspiration from Portland's Pearl District, went to warehouse on like Smoky Hollow. Through thoughtful planning and mixed-use redevelopment, it's now a vibrant, green, economically thriving community. We aim to bring the same energy and diversity to El Segundo.
By introducing mixed-use housing on Granton, Kansas, we can transform Smoky Hollow into a more vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable district. A place where people can work, live, and connect.
Our focus is on the business corridor between Nash Street and P C H, near Mattel and some of El Segundo's largest corporate offices. Right now, the area is dominated by outdated buildings, industrial lots, and hidden retail that's hard to access. But we see a chance to completely reimagine this zone as a mixed-use destination that blends work, life, and tourism.
To attract young talent and new industries, we want to convert vacant or aging office buildings into flexible workspaces that include creative studios. Coworking hubs, and tech-friendly infrastructure. On the ground floor, we'd add local cafes, outdoor seating, and artisan shops to give the area life beyond the nine-to-five. These vibrant street-level experiences help to create a social atmosphere where workers, residents, and visitors can all engage with the space.
Business tourism in El Segundo has the potential to significantly enhance the city's local economy and urban vitality. With strong corporate presence, including companies like Mattel, the Aerospace Corporation, and Go Guardian. The area is already a magnet for professionals and industry leaders. By expanding hotel infrastructure, improving public spaces, and creating vibrant street-level experiences such as local cafes. Artisan markets and cultural events, El Segundo can evolve into a destination that blends work with leisure. Business travelers can extend their stay for local experiences like rooftop dining, public artworks. Or weekend festivals hosted by corporate sponsors.
Expanding eco-friendly transit options will improve access to key commercial zones, boosting foot traffic for businesses and connecting tourists. Residents and workers to important destinations. Having transit stops also near areas such as twenty thirty-one, twenty forty-one East Maple Avenue and three hundred sixty North Pacific Coast Highway. Generates a closer proximity for countless vacant areas in El Segundo to public transport. This enhanced accessibility would incentivize businesses to fill vacancies. Also, incorporating commercial and recreational spaces in areas like twenty fifty-one, East Maple Avenue, and three hundred Continental Boulevard. Can create vibrant, walkable communities using the mixed building, mixed-use building structure. Both public transport and mixed-use buildings contribute to a greener infrastructure. And investing in modernized transportation and mixed-use developments ensures El Segundo stays competitive and a model for sustainable urban development.
With the metro line running nearby, we'll focus on improving transit accessibility so people coming from L A. Or the airport can reach the area easily. This means building clear pedestrian pathways and shaded walkways. A great model for our vision is Culver Boulevard, near Ivy Station in Culver City. That area transformed old, underused lots into a thriving mixed-use hub with corporate offices like Amazon Studios, H B O. Plus walkable streets filled with cafes, boutique hotels, and public spaces. It's connected by the metro, attracts young professionals, and hosts events that bring in both locals and tourists. By following a similar approach, mixing vibrant retail, transit access, and modern corporate spaces. El Segundo can turn the Nash to P C H corridor into a destination for work, life, and tourism.
Ultimately, our plan turns this underused corporate corridor into a thriving, mixed-use destination that supports local business. Encourages tourism, and attracts a new generation of talent ready to live and work in El Segundo.
As we focus on the next fifteen years, we must highlight not only the zoning plans, but the community desires as well. Our plan is to replace the ride aid with a Trader Joe's or additional affordable grocery stores. To generate business revenue and improve walkability around downtown. In a beach town with hundreds of health-oriented and diverse groups, we need a place like this to attract tourism, incentivize local restaurants. And increase helpful walkability in turn. Furthermore, this allows for increased foot traffic to social areas like the Civic Center and Main Street businesses. Increasing overall revenue and affordability. With this, the family and youth-oriented demographics will opt for inexpensive, high-quality goods and commute in an environmentally friendly way. To add on, the area we are rezoning will be mixed-use and feature an upstairs garden rooftop area as well. This will enhance the garden home-like feel of El Segundo, or remaining true to modern living styles, creating a serene business and transportation flow in turn.
The Main Street downtown area is a great place for community and has that classic small-town feel. If we think about the next fifteen years, we need to make updates that keep that charm while also making it more modern, welcoming, and useful for everyone. In this case, we will add more places to hang out, improve walkability, support local shops, and make it more eco-friendly and diversified.
The next area we believe is needed for renovation is the courtyard area of City Hall and the police station. We propose that the area be renovated to be more hangout-friendly with the inclusion of more benches and more greenery. As well as a small fountain. With more places to sit and additional greenery, this will create an incentive for.
With more places to sit and additional greenery, this will create an incentive for more business and farmer-market owners. Considering the Civic Center has a free open space, this is the perfect opportunity for new seating spaces, modern decor, and green areas. Furthermore, we could rezone this space to include new rest areas so farmer-market visitors can relax and enjoy local. Cuisines in comfort. We can change this area to focus on eco-friendly social zones, relaxing lighting, and community engagement overall.
Another idea the other leaders in Iowa would like to propose is to promote slash reintroduce Bird Scooters and introduce a rental bike service like Lime. The goal of this action is to properly accommodate all of the changes each committee has proposed across El Segundo. And it will allow for those who do not have easy access to a vehicle to easily traverse through the city. Originally, Bird Scooters were banned from El Segundo because of their sudden arrival and the chaos that ensued after. However, we believe that with the proper rule set in place, the scooters can serve the community well. First, there will be designated spots all over El Segundo where the scooters can be found and. Pre-return as to not have scooters endangering the sidewalks. Second, each user would be required to be eighteen and have their driver's license as seen in Bird's Terms of Service to ensure there is no misuse of the scooters. These guidelines would also apply to an electric bike service as well.
I'd like to introduce a permit system for residential parking. During our research process, we realized that many workers in nearby restaurants and businesses. Use their parking available on residential streets rather than actual parking lots. They do this because it saves them a- a walk to get to work from their parking spots. This however does not actually allow the residents to park in front of their homes, creating unnecessary issues. In order to alleviate this issue. We could create permits for residential parking only zones in front of homes. Freeing spaces for homeowners to park and also incentivizing workers to use the parking lots already available. Maximizing the utilization of intended areas.
Thank you so much council members for taking the time to watch our video presentation. We greatly appreciate your willingness to engage with the content and to consider the ideas and information we've shared. We hope that the committees have inspired some new innovative ideas and the future of El Segundo looks bright. Thank you so much.
Hey, don't make me use a little hammer. Alright, thank you period four. We'll have some questions from the dais. Would you like to begin?
So you guys talked a lot about um housing east of P C H. But with that, you have to accommodate for a lot of the resources that new residents would have like police and fire, so. How would you guys incorporate that into adding mixed-use and like housing on that side of P C H?
So on east of P C H, there's already like a fire station over there, like a smaller fire station, so maybe we can just. Work on expanding that one a little bit more and incorporating like another smaller police department. Over there, cause it would be less residents on east side of P C H. Um then like downtown El Segundo and everything, so it doesn't need as big of resources, but we can expand those a little bit.
Um you mentioned a figure uh early in the video um that kind of drove your call for more housing in this uh city. It mentioned that. Uh the population wouldn't increase by about twenty percent over the next twenty years um. Is that figure more of a general one you found online for small towns or was it specific to uh El Salvador? I'm sorry.
Um that study, it was going to, in twenty years, the population of El Segundo is probably gonna rise about twenty percent, so yeah, it's specific to the town.
Uh good job in videos. Um in regards to Smokey Hollow and your housing propositions. Um I I know from personal research that there are currently ordinances in place to discourage residential living as it's mostly an industrial zone. Um and 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 uh specific ordinance states that um. Residences must be a hundred yards from Chevron um in that area, and I don't believe. That your apartment propositions um met that requirement. So did you take that into consideration at all, or do you have anything to in response to that?
Um yes, I did take that into consideration and the housing complex that we were proposing was on Grand in Kansas. Um and specifically that zone is a hundred yards away from Chevron, technically.
Um good morning period four. I especially like the idea that you brought up transportation. I really liked that use that you guys had in your video. I find that really creative. There is one thing that I was thinking about though, more on just a general note. I like the idea of tax incentives, especially for smaller businesses. I feel like that's something that El Segundo can afford overall. But the idea of putting these major tax incentives on businesses like Boeing and Raytheon, which are one of the most. Primary contributors towards the whole economy of El Segundo in general with taxes. I feel like that you're gonna start losing revenue overall, especially to fund such of these huge, vast projects. So how are you gonna overcome that economically speaking?
Um I think it's important to take into account that those are those larger comp- uh corporations. So those tax incentives would really be be to bring in um newer, smaller businesses. So those big cuts would be given to them, while we would probably maintain the same tax plan for those bigger companies like Raytheon and Boeing.
Uh first off, I really liked your guys' idea of revitalizing the area outside. Uh my question is regarding east of P C H. And I know that council has talked a lot about that and they haven't been rezoning that to commercialize it or make it residential. Um I was wondering how you guys would justify kicking out those businesses and what would be the implications on the revenue drawn from them?
So we wouldn't be kicking out any businesses. It would be a lot of more like mixed-use buildings, like everyone has been saying. Because um the re- like there's a lot of big businesses over there and the use of the mix, like the purpose of the mixed-use buildings. Is to provide housing for those employees, specifically people that can't necessarily afford. Housing on this side of P C H because it's a lot more expensive. It's a lot of like single-family homes. It's not things people can easily afford. So it wouldn't be kicking out businesses. It would just be to make it more useful and like using the space a little bit better because you can build up more.
Um while while currently Smokey Hollow is mainly light industrial. I your your plan for an apartment would probably make sure um. I- if you wanna add apartments to that area, I don't know if you can build those on top of industrial buildings. So would there be any location or any plan to uh accommodate those businesses that are currently there that would have to be moved out? Cause I don't think that those would be able to continue if you had that as mixed use.
Um so the plan that we have in Smokey Hollow is on Grand in Kansas and currently those two properties are empty. So it would not be displacing any businesses. Um we do hope in the future that like businesses want to also include mixed use in their areas. Um on their properties as well so that it can like benefit the area as a whole. I hope that would answer your question.
Neighborhood in Santa Monica as inspiration for designing a proposal. Did you take any inspiration from any other cities or areas here when designing your proposal?
Yeah, so essentially we took a lot of inspiration from Santa Monica and Culver City with their mixed-use developments and. I know they have a lot of areas with like a grocery store and then like housing on top. So we took a lot of inspiration from Culver City and then a lot from Redondo in Manhattan, like those outdoor areas essentially. So we just wanted to implement some of their like modern eco-friendly styles that they had into El Segundo to incorporate more of like a. General feel of Los Angeles, so.
Any further questions from the dais? Alright, well done.
It's not only the home to over sixteen thousand residents, but also an amazing community culture known for its small-town vibe. Sports, education, and industry. As period three, we are committed to making our beautiful town the best it can be, which involves us taking a unique approach.
Instead of splitting our committees into sections of the map, we decide to categorize it based off of the needs of El Segundo's government. Thus, our six committees are Housing, Circulation, Economic Development, Land Use, Recreation. And Environment and Safety. Let us dive into the first component, Housing.
Let's get into housing. Daytime versus the nighttime population in El Segundo vastly differs. According to citydata.com, eighty-three point nine percent of workers drive to work while one point one percent walk to work. With a small population of seventeen thousand and over a hundred thousand coming from outside of Gundo. Increasing the residents in El Segundo would improve overall production and business.
In our class poll, we asked which land use option would best maximize the value of underutilized space in El Segundo. Thirty-nine point five percent of people chose mixed-use development and thirty-three point five percent of people chose affordable housing. Adding that together, that's a total of seventy-three percent of our poll responses believe that housing is one of our biggest problems here in El Segundo.
Here are a few ideas we have come up with. We could transform Rite Aid into a mixed-use building with the store on the bottom and apartment complexes on top.
Second, Raytheon and Boeing bring in many workers from outside El Segundo. Housing some of them locally could boost productivity. By converting surface-level parking lots, building a garage on one and apartments on others, we can create space-efficient housing. While we can't require it, we can offer incentives like tax breaks and lifting industrial zoning restrictions.
East El Segundo, reuse of industrial buildings. And infill housing on the underutilized parcel next to the point off of Rose Grant and Nash. While having transit-oriented development near the metro sea line to encourage sustainable growth.
Smokey Hollow is a light industrial office space, but we want to specifically focus on the streets, East Grand Avenue and East Franklin Avenue. Where we can incorporate more housing options, whether it be apap- apartment buildings or mixed-use. With the continuous growing population, we need to implement more housing and doing it on these street, specific streets would be beneficial because it is around other residential areas. And is around the nearby schools.
As the population of El Segundo is expected to increase over the following decades, the streets will have more pedestrians and traffic. So our circulation infrastructure needs to be updated. Some ideas we have include a lunch shuttle, implementing bike lanes on Main Street, improving residential and recreational parking, and road infrastructure. The lunch shuttle will be used to take employees from the business side of El Segundo into downtown during lunch hours. There's county funding to support this through Prop A, which would cover a hundred percent of the cost. As mentioned before, we would have the shuttle run two different routes, one into downtown and one into the point. Our poll found that eighty-eight percent of the people liked the idea of the shuttle. And if possible, we suggested using a trolley-style bus to preserve the image of a small-town feel. El Segundo currently has a parking shortage. Streets are full and traversing through the neighborhood can be challenging. Our solution is to expand Chevron's parking lots to allow for residential or recreational use. In order to incentivize Chevron to allow this, we can either offer to pay for the construction. Or have a low-priced toll that will pay to both Chevron and El Segundo to reimburse construction costs. Residents of southwest El Segundo could also get a pass for free to try and clear up the surrounding streets. Our poll found that with this parking pass incentive, seventy-four percent of El Segundo residents approved of this idea. El Segundo has many blind turns on certain intersections due to parking, which also leads to cramped streets. A solution to this would be to introduce more bulb-outs in non-residential areas. Bulb-outs create a divot in the sidewalk where people can park without crowding the streets. Another cheaper option would be to expand stop sign red zones in residential areas for better visibility. However, this will limit the amount of parking in these zones. With Main Street, we want to adopt part of the downtown-specific plan. That would expand the sidewalk and cut down the street to one vehicle lane on each side while creating bike lanes. All this allows restaurants to better establish outside dining and benefit from increased pedestrian mobility.
El Segundo is growing, and so is our vision for a vibrant, sustainable local economy. As the Economic Development Group, our key part of that vision includes strengthening our hotels and tourism sector through a thoughtful-faced update to the city's transient occupancy tax. Or T O T, which is a small fee added to hotel or short-term rental stays that helps fund local city services. Currently, El Segundo's T O T rate is twelve percent, one of the lowest in Los Angeles County. To stay competitive and support continued community growth, we're proposing a modest increase of one percent per year over the next three years, reaching fifteen percent by the end of the period. The gradual approach gives hotels and their guests time to adjust, minimizing disruption while supporting long-term planning. The additional revenue will help fund essential city services that keep El Segundo safe, attractive, and welcoming for residents and visitors. Some may worry that higher T O T rates could discourage travelers, but research shows people prioritize experience, location, and quality over small differences in tax rates. According to our poll, seventy-one point eight percent support an increase in the transient occupancy tax. As long as they know how the additional revenue is being used to improve things like local roads, parks, and emergency services. There's also the question of short-term rentals like Airbnb. It's important to note that T O T applies equally to these platforms, ensuring fairness across the board and keeping the playing field level for all hospitality providers.
Beyond the tax changes, we're proposing to work closely with local hotels to enhance the visitor experience. This includes promoting recreational packages, providing brochures with activity suggestions at check-in. And aligning hotel deals with local events like outdoor movie nights and farmers markets. At the same time, we're also looking to reimagine spaces like the Rite Aid strip mall and build on the momentum already happening in Smokey Hollow. According to our poll, eighty-one point four percent of respondents believe a strip mall in the Rite Aid Plaza would be valuable addition to the community. Through modern zoning tools and beautification grants, we aim to encourage mixed-use development and attract a vibrant. New tenants from an economic standpoint.
We plan to transform underused spaces with fresh storefronts, greenery, and family-friendly features to create a more vibrant, walkable, and welcoming community. These ideas are investments that invite people to stay, explore, and support local businesses. El Segundo's future is bright, and by investing in tourism, enhancing the visitor experience, and promoting our city through targeted marketing and revitalization efforts. We're laying the foundation for economic development. According to our poll, seventy-five percent of people have never seen or are not sure if they have seen an ad for El Segundo. El Segundo can more actively promote its own events or partner with L A events encouraging visitors to extend their stay in the city. According to our poll, eighty-one point seven percent of respondents believed Instagram is the most effective platform for promoting El Segundo. These initiatives attract more visitors, support local businesses, create jobs, and generate revenue that gets reinvested into our community.
As land use, we focused on different areas to see if any regulations could be changed to encourage homes and businesses to come in to attract individuals to El Segundo. We also looked at different dead spaces that we could transform into apartment complexes, business buildings, and greenery. For example, Smokey Hollow, Raytheon, Freedom Park, and Little Imperial are all areas that could greatly increase foot traffic, the economy. And support increase in population for El Segundo, allowing us to host more events all over town. Smokey Hollow would be a great area to increase the floor area ratio to allow more multi-story offices and mixed-use buildings. Results from a poll of people working and living in El Segundo said that forty-five point seven percent believe that mixed-use development. Is the best use for underutilized areas, and twenty-nine point five percent said that affordable housing is. This would support live slash workspace and attract foot traffic to cafes or small retailers on the ground floor. We could also offer grants or tax incentives to businesses to renovate old buildings or abandoned buildings to encourage more businesses to move there. We can encourage Raytheon to develop employee housing through tax incentives or by engaging in land swaps with Raytheon. Such strategies could encourage the company to allocate surplus land for residential products. Exploring public-private partnerships with major employers like Raytheon can help develop a housing solution for the workforce. Freedom Park can bring in foot traffic from people going down P C H if we implement a third-street promenade field with restaurants and shops for people. From the poll, fifty percent of people agree or strongly agree, while twenty-four percent are indifferent. Freedom Park as of right now is a playground, which we could keep to allow parents to shop while their kids can play. We also believe adding a splash pad into there could also encourage more people to go there. The grassy area on Imperial can also help with foot traffic in the city if we add a walking trail. This uh would be possible if the city negotiates with S C E. Some other cities that have implemented successful zoning areas include Buffalo, New York, which created a unified development ordinance. That prioritized physical form and community input over traditional use-based zoning. They eliminated many minimum parking requirements, recognizing that they could hinder the creation of mixed-use spaces, which allowed more flexible development and reduced costs for developers. Louisville, Kentucky implemented reduced restrictions on community gardens, which made use of vacant lots, which increased healthy food and created more green space. Removed barriers to building accessory dwelling units and duplexes, and smaller and more affordable housing options. They implemented My Louisville Home, which was a housing strategy. They implemented My Louisville Home, which was a housing strategy to create fifteen thousand units of affordable housing by twenty-twenty-seven.
We propose renovations to Collater Park and Sycamore Park, adding scenic decks, native landscaping, shaded seating, accessible walkways, murals, and a safe play zone for kids two to five. These updates will create sustainable welcoming spaces for families and commuters. Recent polls show that forty-three percent of residents visit parks weekly. Nearly eighty percent used the local parks last year, and fifty-seven percent support a bond or tax increase to improve them. We also support revitalizing memory row and improving El Segundo Dog Park with safer fencing, ADA access, and lighting, backed by growing resident support. Studies show safe play areas can boost kids' outdoor activity by eighty-four percent. In addition to this, we have a proposal for Chevron Park. Chevron Park is a large green space owned by Chevron, but is closed to the general public except during occasional events. Given that El Segundo ranks below average in park space per resident compared to nearby cities, this is a missed opportunity for recreational activities. Once Chevron's agreement with the city expires in twenty-twenty-seven, the use of the park to the public can be negotiated. The city of El Segundo can collaborate with Chevron to offer incentives, such as tax benefits, public recognition, or branding opportunities to encourage public use of Chevron Park. We also noticed that El Segundo currently lacks a public track for walking or running. Since space is limited, we propose opening the E S H S track to the public during off-hours. This promotes active lifestyles without requiring new construction. One area that needs attention is the pool at Hilltop Park. We're proposing renovations to make the pool safer and more accessible for everyone. We want to put a strong focus on renovating bathrooms. Residents have voiced concern for years about how outdated and rundown they are. We're also proposing a splash pad near Hilltop's pool, which we believe should be a top priority to bring more family-friendly fun to the area.
As the Open Space and Recreation Group just shared, our city's parks are important assets. However, an unsafe environment can render these parks useless, as well as decrease the general quality of life for El Segundo's residents and de-incentivize future growth. That's why, as a part of our environmental planning focus, we propose a network of air quality monitors installed across El Segundo in areas of high foot traffic. These monitors wouldn't just collect data, they'd educate. Each one would include a Q R code that links directly to a public website showing real-time air quality readings, trends, and explanations for residents. We've selected ten key locations to cover different zones of the city: Acacia Park, Library Park, Imperial Dog Park, Rec Park, Sycamore Park, Smoky Hollow Roasters, Campus El Segundo, and the intersections of Grand and P C H, El Segundo and Douglas, and P C H and Park Place. These areas combine heavy use, pedestrian access, and geographic diversity, perfect for visibility and effectiveness. This isn't just a theory, it's also backed by data. We polled El Segundo residents and found that an overwhelming sixty-two point seven percent say they would feel more comfortable if monitors were installed. And while forty-five point four percent say they never checked the air quality now, fifty-six point eight percent said they would scan Q R codes to check air quality more often. This suggests that air quality monitoring is wanted, and the solution is likely to increase awareness about El Segundo's air quality. In addition to environmental efforts, we want to briefly address public safety. Though El Segundo is generally a safe place, most crimes are committed by nonresidents. And with major events like the Olympics, Super Bowl, and World Cup on the horizon, it's critical that our police force is prepared. Our poll shows that over seventy-two percent of residents agree, bolstering the police force would provide peace of mind and security as our region draws global attention. With these steps, informing the public, collecting local data, and strengthening safety, we hope to empower El Segundo to face the next thirty years with resilience and transparency, while also increasing the quality of life of its residents.
Thank you so much for watching. We only hope our ideas and insights can be a boon for the city of El Segundo. In regards to land use, thank you.
How are the Republicans in the House of Representatives?
Founded in nineteen-seventeen, El Segundo is not only the home of
All right, thank you, period three. Why don't we start with the questioning on this side and come down this way?
You guys brought the idea of giving tax cuts to Raytheon and Boeing. I feel like that would definitely affect a lot of our funding. How do you guys think that would work?
I think it would be beneficial for the production of El Segundo with Boeing and Raytheon specifically. Our plan is to house the employees there, so that would help increase production there. So in turn, that would help increase the amount of money that we get back from those companies as well.
So I noticed that you guys' groups were based around certain interests and how certain sections of how you want to improve the city, rather than certain geographic locations in the city. Was there times where you had to make compromises between the different interests? And what in your presentation was created as a result of those compromises?
I mean, that's kind of the point of why we wanted to attack this as a problem-based solution rather than an area-based solution, because it means that all of our groups kind of had to work together, and it means that all of us have a really in-depth knowledge about every part of El Segundo, and it means that a solution somewhere might cause a problem, and that's a lot more obvious and easily addressed when we're all working with all of El Segundo and rather focusing on specific problems instead of areas. So like, I think it was Rocco who just asked about the why tax cuts, like, wouldn't that hurt the revenue generated from those businesses for El Segundo? And like Wesley said, it was a balance, and we were able to come to that balance of like, yes, but then it will provide housing for the employees, which will hopefully boost the production of the businesses, which will sort of balance out those tax cuts. And so that's a solution that we arrived with, working together with our groups and kind of approaching it from like, all of El Segundo and more focused on the specific problems rather than breaking it up into the sections.
Oh, and I'd like to add on to that, additionally, imposing with our T O T, increasing it from twelve to fifteen percent over the next two years would also increase the amount of money that we're getting from residents as well.
Yeah, I remember at the end you guys were talking about increasing the police force, but there's already like, an extremely large police force that they spend like a third of the city budget on. I was wondering how you would justify putting even more money and jobs into the police force when there's like other things that could probably use that?
I mean, of course, there's lots of other things that the city could spend its money on, and that's sort of a reason why it was a smaller part at the very end of our presentation, is because we understood that housing and, you know, economic development was a bigger problem than that, but we did kind of want to touch base on everything. And according to our poll, people at least think that we need a better police force, or at least want to bolster it in, like, when we're expecting a lot more people to pass through who aren't residents, which will likely result in a higher crime rate. And so, also, last Civics Day when I was here, I was walking through the police department, and there was a detective walking me around. I forget his name, he was lovely, but he was just saying how actually like, there's a shortage of officers, and he was a detective, and he says that they're looking for hiring, and it's a long process and it takes a while. And so, I was thinking if we could allocate just a little bit more funds or at least time or energy towards making that a smoother process. I think it would help the police force, it would help the mentality of the workers already there, and it would also help the residents of El Segundo feel more safe.
I think a lot of your ideas were really great, but not as related to the zoning as some of the other groups. Specifically, I wanted to bring up one of the first things you brought up, which was parking near the edge of curbs, which I believe is called daylighting, and has recently been like signed into California law as like not being allowed or being illegal. And I was wondering how you guys would pitch anything like repainting curbs or extending the edges of curbs to be economically incentivized? Or to like have a, what would make council or the city want to spend money on something that has already been outlawed in the state?
Are you saying that the parking near the red zones is illegal? Yeah, so they have the red zones near stop signs so that vehicles can see around them, but in a lot of areas, there's sometimes no paint. And so, you were just saying that in a lot of, there's just, not all zones, but in some areas where there's like Kansas and Mariposa, on that turn, there is no stop sign for the people on Mariposa. So, returning from Kansas either right or left onto Mariposa is a little challenging. And in some areas, there's, you know, only five or six feet of zone where you can park before the red. And so, if you just extend the red zone a little bit farther, it gives you like ten to fifteen degrees more visibility down either side of the street, which we think will be beneficial.
Any further questions from the dice? All right, great job, guys.
El Segundo council members, board members, and beyond. This may be obvious, but the city of El Segundo is beloved by its community for its vibrance, beauty, and opportunity. Even the most well-maintained places can be left behind if they fail to adapt to changing times and plan for the future. Our class has been tasked with rezoning the city of El Segundo in hopes for a better future looking twenty years ahead.
As of right now, the city of El Segundo has many rezoning and zoning plans in place, but we need to think ahead. Our class has come up with many revisions and alterations within the city of El Segundo, specifically remodeling City Hall, increasing building heights, taking advantage of California Density Bonus Law, revising parking plans, implementing mixed-use housing and mixed-use office use, and even revitalizing El Segundo's very own Smoky Hollow Wiley Park.
Moving on to the downtown El Segundo area, our goal was to maintain the integrity of businesses and attractions while incorporating more parking as well as mixed-use buildings for more affordable housing. When it comes to mixed-use buildings, El Segundo has a current height requirement in the downtown area on Main Street for forty-five feet, as well as forty-five feet on Richmond Street. And we understand that El Segundo is proposing to raise this maximum height to sixty feet, potentially allowing for mixed-use buildings.
However, the California Density Bonus Law means that if a residential owner meets a certain criteria of providing affordable housing for low-income families, they are entitled by the Density Bonus Law to extra density. This means more units of housing on the same building or a piece of land than would normally be allowed. Therefore, they can provide even more housing.
We recommend that the city advertises this law so that El Segundo can provide residential owners with an incentive for more affordable housing. For example, providing this information through email or on the El Segundo website could be a good way to advertise.
We decided to rezone Main Street specifically because we want to prioritize businesses for revenue while offering new housing opportunities. And this could potentially allow employees to find housing near their work.
Because more residential housing would be allowed under the new plan, additional parking will be needed to accommodate future residents. To address this, we propose creating an underground parking in alleys behind the businesses along Main Street. This approach not only maximizes space, but allows us to comply with Code fifteen-fifteen-five-A two, which states that parking facilities in non-residential zones must be designed so that any vehicle on the property can exit traveling in a forward direction, although vehicles may exit onto an alley in reverse.
We'll ensure that the layout follows all current parking standards. Typically, parking standard spaces ranges between eight point five and nine feet wide. That are about eighteen feet long. Isles between parking roads would measure between fourteen and twenty-four feet, depending on whether the traffic is one-way or two-way.
Finally, accessible parking spaces will be included and will fully comply with ADA Title III requirements, as well as California Code of Regulations Title twenty-four.
Additionally, we want to remodel the area outside of City Hall, adding more greenery and attractions. The remodeled area would create a space where people can interact more while visiting Main Street. This area would also be a place for community events to be held, such as live bands and fairs.
This renovation would be needed because there would be more residents on Main Street, and they might be looking for new attractions and events to attend on a daily basis. This could also draw more people into downtown El Segundo.
We sent out a survey to residents in El Segundo, and many concerns with the city were indicated.
Majority of respondents wanted better parking, with sixty-five point eight percent of respondents being somewhat satisfied to dissatisfied with current parking.
The majority of responses were supportive of adding mixed-use buildings into downtown El Segundo. Sixty-eight point two percent of respondents were in support of adding mixed-use buildings to residential areas, and sixty-one point eight percent were in support of adding mixed-use buildings on Main Street.
Finally, thirty-eight point seven percent of responders indicated that housing and zoning reform should be El Segundo's main priority for the future, which aligns with our future plans for parking and mixed-use buildings.
In the heart of El Segundo, between P C H, El Segundo Boulevard, Aviation, and Rosecrans lies a district full of untapped potential. By day, it buzzes with aerospace and business, but at night, it falls silent. What if that changed? Welcome to El Segundo After Dark, a bold vision for a walkable nightlife district where the community thrives. More than entertainment, it's about identity, opportunity, and a future for everyone.
At Topgolf El Segundo, we're not proposing new additions, and that's intentional. This site already thrives, bringing in over half a million visitors yearly and generating twenty to twenty-five million per location. It supports two hundred-plus local jobs and boosts nearby hotels and restaurants, all operating within specialized zoning. Topgolf is a proven entertainment anchor and economic engine. It's already doing what El Segundo needs, so our goal is to build around that momentum.
We're reimagining the back end of Raytheon's lot into a public plaza anchored by an open amphitheater for concerts, expos, and festivals. Next to it, a mini farmer's market plaza serving Korean barbecue, tapas, and Thai desserts. We'll also add a rooftop wine bar with ocean and monodays featuring live music. To make room, we'll consolidate scattered lots into a three-story parking structure, supporting employees and freeing land for culture, food, and nightlife.
El Segundo Plaza and the surrounding urban south can evolve into a mixed-use zone where people live, work, and thrive. Despite generating millions in tax revenue, this area full of important businesses and industries doesn't give enough back to the people who work here.
A poll of one hundred and fifty-one El Segundo residents found that sixty-seven percent support mixed-use housing, underscoring the need for affordable options in the business district. By adding mixed-use housing, green space, outdoor dining, and health-conscious food spots, we support retail workers, city staff, and local employees to make a vibrant, livable district. Protected bike lanes, shaded sidewalks, and parks turn this industrial area into a walkable hub. These upgrades increase foot traffic, attract businesses, and boost employee wellness. Less commuting, more local spending, and healthier, happier people.
Introducing the Living Aerospace Museum, an immersive STEM experience that celebrates El Segundo's aerospace legacy and future. House in a converted hangar and warehouse. It will feature flight simulations, interactive exhibits, and immersive storytelling, all powered by solar panels, LED lighting, and kinetic sculptures. We'll start with a pop-up to spark interest, and then grow into a full exhibit hall with STEM classrooms, labs, and event-ready courtyards with teaser campaigns and local partnerships.
Let's transform Reliant National Zone to the South Bay's nightlife capital. According to a poll with one hundred and fifty-two El Segundo residents, only three point nine percent of them are very satisfied with El Segundo's current public transportation. Because of this, we first add late-night metro shuttles, scooters, and weekend car rental zones.
Next, we convert warehouses into two hundred to three hundred loft-style homes near Douglas Station. Then we activate the area: ten to twelve eateries, eight to ten lounges, five shops, and three to five event spaces. Five theme zones: food halls, jazz clubs, coworking cafes, tiki bars, all linked by neon lights and public art. This is El Segundo After Dark, walkable, welcoming, and unforgettable.
Proposal for North El Segundo Boulevard. Specifically, the commercial corridor north of El Segundo Boulevard and east of Pacifico Highway. This area includes several types of zoning. The core is general commercial, or C three, which allows retail and office use, but doesn't permit housing and limits building heights to just twenty-eight feet. Nearby zones include M one, which is light industrial, C O, commercial office, and P F, public facilities. Most of this land is underutilized and filled with surface parking, low-rise buildings, and outdated layouts that don't meet the needs of a growing and changing city. We're proposing a bold update to El Segundo zoning code that prepares this area for the next twenty-five to thirty years. First, we recommend allowing mixed-use development in the C three zone. That means developers can build housing above stores and restaurants without unnecessary delays. We propose requiring at least fifteen percent of all new housing units be affordable, which means occupants pay no more than thirty percent of their gross income. We propose requiring at least fifteen percent of all new housing units be affordable, which means occupants pay no more than thirty percent of their gross income. In return, developers can get bonuses for building more homes, so everyone wins. We also suggest raising the height limit in a C three zone to sixty-five feet, about five to six stories. And adjusting building rules to support more vertical walkable development. To guide this growth, we'd add a form-based overlay to Sepulveda. This means new buildings would be designed for active street life, better walkability and great architecture. In the M one industrial zone, we will create what we call innovation mixed use. This would allow clean manufacturing, startup offices and even live work housing in the same area. Heights could go up to fifty or sixty feet and buildings would need to meet strong sustainability standards like solar panels and stormwater systems. In the C O zone, we propose allowing housing above office space. These business parks could be transformed into more vibrant places with coworking spaces, plazas and coffee shops that support both work and everyday life. Across all zones, sustainability is a core part of our proposal. We recommend requiring green roofs or solar panels for larger projects. Replacing surface parking with shared garages and using smart water systems to help meet California's climate goals. We propose creating a transit-oriented development zone near bus routes and job centers. In these areas, we would eliminate parking minimums and build in support for walking, biking and transit. We understand there could be concerns like traffic, noise or stress on services. That's why our plan includes careful phasing. Public input and strong design rules to make sure growth is balanced. Picture a warm Saturday morning. Sepulveda Boulevard is full of life, mid-rise buildings line the street. On the ground floor are cafes, bookstores and shared workspaces. Families walk under the tree canopies, cyclists ride in protected bike lanes. And neighbors chat in small parks built where parking lots used to be. This is a future where El Segundo leads by example, embracing smart planning, climate resilience and inclusive growth that benefits everyone.
Right now in El Segundo, residential buildings are capped at just two stories. Residential R two zone buildings with pitched roofs must not extend thirty-two feet in two stories. For lots wider than forty feet, structures are restricted to a maximum height of twenty-six feet or two stories. But what if we looked up and built higher?
Our survey found that the majority of El Segundo residents support building higher in specific zones, including residential areas. By rezoning to allow four stories, we add more housing for families of all income levels. Boost local businesses with more foot traffic. Provide homes for our growing tech and aerospace workers. Build a greener, more walkable city.
Our plan follows four key steps. Our first step is a zoning code amendment. We would raise the height limit to four stories. Our next step would require community engagement. We would host public workshops and address concerns about density, parking and infrastructure. We would create developer partnerships and attract teams focused on affordability and sustainability. And our fourth step involves design guidelines to help preserve El Segundo's character with thoughtful architecture, green spaces and rooftop amenities.
We're not starting from scratch. El Segundo already has momentum.
The certified twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-nine housing element promotes mixed-use development ADUs and funding partnerships. The Affordable Housing Strategic Plan adopted in December twenty-twenty-three focuses on site identification, developer attraction and securing funding. Already yielding results such as Pacific Coast Commons featuring two hundred sixty-three units with thirty-two of them being labeled as affordable. The city is also exploring live-work policies to prioritize affordable housing for public safety and city staff as discussed at the April twenty-fourth planning commission meeting. We're committed to partnering with the city to help achieve these goals.
Other cities are leading with equity. Santa Monica housed nine people through a fair lottery. Inglewood Fairview Heights has fifty units for the formerly homeless. Culver City is developing six hundred fourteen affordable units. Some fear losing El Segundo's charm, but affordable homes can blend in beautifully.
In November of twenty-twenty-two, the Public Policy Institute of California found that seventy-six percent of adults and seventy-one percent of likely voters favor government policies. Aimed at increasing affordable rental housing for lower and middle-income Californians. California Chamber of Commerce poll found that seventy-three percent of voters support using tax dollars to increase subsidies for low-income housing. And in twenty-twenty-three, Quinnipiac University reported that over seventy percent of Californians, including ninety percent of Democrats and fifty-two percent of Republicans. Believe more housing for low-income people should be built. Additionally, nearly seventy-five percent of respondents supported building low-income housing in their own communities.
In a survey sent out to El Segundo residents, a hundred out of one hundred sixty-five responses reported that El Segundo needs more low-income housing developments. We believe that El Segundo can adopt improved systems like public lotteries, strict eligibility checks and long-term oversight. One possibility, the green space at Washington Park. It is a prime location for mixed-use development that could blend housing, green space and local business. The space is currently owned by California Edison, so the land would have to be rented. Direct park could evolve into a vibrant place for community and nature. With walking paths lined with art and plaques that share the rich history of El Segundo. Vibrant trees and shades of pink, purple and red would add color and life. Surrounding peaceful gardens with statues and even a possible blue butterfly exhibit at the heart of the park.
Smokey Hollow is a one hundred and twenty-acre industrial district in El Segundo. Known for its history and creative potential, it has long been used for manufacturing and warehouse space, but under current zoning, it's limited in what it can become.
We analyzed the ordinance documents and found key restrictions that block growth. Residential development is currently prohibited. Building heights cap at fifty feet and sixty feet only with Tier Two Community Benefit Plan. Existing residential units built before the plan are classified as non-conforming and accessory dwelling units are not allowed.
While businesses continue to operate in the area, many struggle to retain young employees due to the lack of nearby housing. Since ninety-eight percent of El Segundo's revenue comes from businesses, adding local affordable housing is essential to long-term success.
When polling two hundred fifty El Segundo residents, sixty point two percent prioritize residential housing and sixty-seven point six percent prioritize small businesses opening. Which also support our rezoning plans of Smokey Hollow. Additionally, a total of eighty-four point six percent agree that they would be open to living in mixed-use buildings in Smokey Hollow District if working there. Our new land use plan aims to transform Smokey Hollow into a vibrant mixed-use district combining residential, commercial and recreational spaces. New zoning would allow for multi-story mixed-use buildings with shops, restaurants, offices and housing, bringing more energy and economic growth to El Segundo. Many existing one-story or unused buildings would be replaced or renovated into modern, flexible workspaces. Raising the height limit to eighty feet would maximize space, enabling the addition of both offices and housing with a focus on affordable units for current employees. Insufficient service parking would be replaced with structured or underground garages. Allowing for integrated buildings where people can work, live above and park below, all in the same location.
Wiley Park is the center point of this plan. It's surrounded by apartments, businesses and recently constructed parking structure. The area around it is ideal for new mixed-use buildings. The park will be revitalized with outdoor seating, food trucks, pickleball courts and shaded areas for workers and families. Which is inspired by the Hangar, Twenty-four Craft Brewing and Irvine. This place is surrounded by businesses and offices. These updates will create a stronger community presence in an area that's mostly used during work hours.
Wiley Park is privately owned. To move forward, the city must provide incentives to the owner. This includes revenue sharing from vendors and events, reduce property taxes for public access improvements. And potential city-funded upgrades in exchange for long-term use. This makes the space financially beneficial to the owner while opening it up to the community.
Adding residential or mixed-use elements increases property value and demand. An estimated five hundred and seventeen thousand square feet will be added to Smokey Hollow by twenty forty, supporting new housing for incoming workers. Additionally, studies from cities like Culver City and Pasadena show mixed-use areas increase local spending by up to thirty percent and help retain skilled workers.
Concerns about the nearby Chevron refinery were addressed, with data showing no added risk for Smokey Hollow residents. Its impact is city-wide and shouldn't hinder the district's redevelopment.
Expected results include shorter commute to more walkable streets and stronger local businesses. Increased housing boosts population destiny. Local spending and commercial tax revenue. This plan delivers economic value, community access and sustainable future for El Segundo.
The Period Two class would like to thank you all for taking the time to listen as well as your attention and interest in the new ideas, suggestions. And rezoning plans we have shared with you.
Thank you, Period Two. Let's start uh start down here. Gentlemen.
Uh so you guys are offering a lot of new ideas that have to do with construction and you're willing to go through that. But I feel like it would take a pretty long time to get um to be finished with all the new businesses and construction. Do you think? If you were to initiate that kind of a project, you would do it before the Olympics and before all the events that are coming to LA or afterwards?
Um obviously, this is obviously a large plan that will cover around twenty to thirty years as we know. Um so most likely, that would be in place uh after the Olympics. Obviously, no major construction now. Um but this is uh more likely a uh phased-out plan. Uh where we phase it out, not all at once. Um this is not an overnight thing, obviously. So uh maybe some stuff could be done um around the Olympics, but most of it obviously after considering it's a twenty-year plan.
Overall, I really, I really like the idea of the El Segundo After Dark. I think that's actually a really fun and unique concept as well as the aerospace museum. I do believe truthfully, we need more stuff like that in El Segundo. The only concern that kind of raised my head with all of this, especially the idea that you guys are bringing up of adding four-story building, even at one point, quote me if I'm wrong. Thirty-story buildings towards all of those districts. As we know from history and whatnot, especially with the Chicago Fire, that poses a huge fire risk. You're having condensed buildings in large areas that are. You know, higher than normal. Do you, first of all, have you looked into what will be needed in terms of fire safety? For these buildings and all that's required? And have you found the ways which we can fund that throughout the money that we have allocated?
Um yeah, so uh one thing we did talk about um in terms of building heights is right. There's not a lot of land space that's available to expand out. Um for example, with all of these aerospace companies, what's kind of in style is more of a campus layout. But you can't really have that um with every business or with housing, for example, so. Um the only way is to go up. Uh to be honest, we didn't really look into it. Thank you for that question about the fire safety and whatnot. Um but in terms of actual building, uh you can't really go anywhere but up.
Um I was curious where you guys were planning on putting the aerospace museum.
Um the aerospace museum would be near Boeing. I believe we already have one and we would just work around that and work up. Um also, I want to go back to uh the Olympics. Um for like El Segundo After Dark and for the museum, I want to do, or I see a bunch of pop-ups like happening. To like see how it would work in the community before we go all out. And I feel like that could be helpful during the Olympics to to draw in more people.
Uh yeah, I was also curious about the practicality and possibly the feasibility or necessity of the aerospace museum. As you mentioned, we already do have one by Boeing and then there's also the California Science Museum, which has a large collection of aerospace artifacts and history there already. So would it be the most practical consideration for us to fund a project of this scale moving forward?
Um I think it would bring a lot of people here, especially since this is such an aerospace hub. Um we would just build off of the existing uh museum that we have and again, just make it more open and like kid-friendly. I feel like right now, it's like just like all of what has happened and not really like interactive and like eye-opening. So I feel like if we make this better, it'll draw more people.
Um I appreciate you guys' ideas, especially with the El Segundo After Dark District. I think it would really help bring the community together. However, many new businesses use El Segundo as a springboard to start their companies. And success stories such as Beyond Meat show how we can gain large uh revenue contributors to the city through the growth that Smokey Hollow provides. And your El Segundo After Dark proposal would disrupt this significantly by uh kicking out what would potentially be the next success story. How do you plan to mitigate uh these concerns?
So El Segundo After Dark would be after like the typical nine to five. Um we saw, and it was also in the southeast of PCH. So it would bring more people during that time because typically over there on that side of PCH. It is often shuts down after nine to five and so we want to keep that momentum going longer than those hours.
You guys talked about utilizing the green space behind Raytheon and we talked about that too in our period. And I was curious because we came up with the problem that Raytheon would have a security breach, so I was wondering how you guys would tackle that.
Um we're, we were still thinking about that too. We know we were asking AI a lot of like the constraints about this. But most of it is just like the huge parking lot and so we wanted to turn that into a multiple-story parking lot. So we could move some of that into actual areas where we can have things for the public.
I had one more question. So you guys are introducing a lot of new ideas for community engagement, like especially the after-hours. Um the big concern here is the culture of El Segundo, because right now we're a pretty, a pretty quiet town. And so by introducing all these new initiatives to engage people, are are you concerned that the noise level and that. El Segundo would become too loud and we would lose that aesthetic that we currently have? Or do you feel like it's a positive change that people would really like?
Um yeah, so I talked about in my uh video, uh some consequences like noise and traffic. And you kind of like have to look at, look at it from a pros and cons perspective, right? Like you have the small town right now and it has its small-town charm. But it is a growing city and there are consequences to every change. So it really depends on what the residents want. And what shows is that they do want this city to be bigger, so uh that would be a willing consequence or byproduct of our decision.
City manager, any comments? No, I was talking to Hale. You good? Alright, fantastic work, guys. Thank you so much.
Downtown El Segundo is the city's heartbeat, but to continue thriving into the future, we need to reimagine how it works for residents, businesses and visitors. Currently, Main Street is dominated by small retail and office space and there are only a handful of mixed-use buildings with current zoning laws restricting height and density. Our plan, let's rezone Main Street from the current commercial downtown structure to a mixed-use format. A mixed-use approach allows for residential and business considerations to function together. This supports small businesses and houses the very people who work there. With about ninety-three percent of workers in El Segundo commuting in, we need housing that minimizes our reliance on travel and transportation. Potential candidates for a mixed-use format are pre-existing businesses on Main Street that have the infrastructure that would support a housing unit on the second story. But are not utilizing their height effectively. Optimal buildings include three fifty-seven and three fifty-nine Main Street as they are already surrounded by other mixed-use buildings such as three oh one and three thirty-seven Main Street.
It is also important to consider rezoning the east side of Main to allow multi-story mixed-use developments, keeping the west side's historic charm while modernizing selectively. Infrastructure would not be straight either. Water and sewer capacity on Main are under seventy percent max load. That means there is more room to build smart without overloading the system. However, the most notable concern from our poll was the amount of downtown parking with the addition of mixed-use units. A way to mitigate this is to ensure that zoning regulations require either the construction or allocation of ample parking spaces before the units are approved.
Green space is another important consideration. We propose converting either the city-owned parking lot at the corner of Main and Grand or the courtyard at the heart of Main Street. Into a larger green belt that would serve as a community hub for farmer's markets and other community events. The further addition of more pocket parks on Main and Franklin and expanded sidewalk dining zones encourages town charm and an emphasis on community. Essentially, this would result in a micro district, an area with live workspaces, local restaurants, art installations and event-ready plazas.
For easier access and increased visitation to this newly improved downtown area, we propose capitalizing on Metro LA's next-gen bus plan. Which is aimed at modernizing Los Angeles County's bus network. Extending the city-funded bus line from the stop at Campus El Segundo and utilizing the existing bus stop at Main and Holly. That potentially continuing on to Doc Weller Beach would essentially connect residents, tourists and local businesses. This would also aid travel with the Olympics, World Cup and Super Bowl on the way and encourage community engagement. During these events, we also recommend a temporary revision to ordinance number sixteen fourteen, allowing short-term rentals for under thirty days in El Segundo. But only in designated downtown mixed-use zones. This will maximize economic gain and local exposure for these events. Responses from our poll mainly supported this idea as long as strict regulation and enforcement is maintained, which we'll be sure to do.
Our group will be specifically focusing on the areas in between Sepulveda Boulevard, Rosecrans Ave, Aviation Boulevard and El Segundo Boulevard.
Our first proposal is converting the retail buildings occupied by Shake Shack on Rosecrans, the office buildings behind it, the plaza on El Segundo Boulevard. And more buildings into two to three-story mixed-use buildings. We would keep the current retail and dining outlets on the first floor and add residential units above. While also expanding the nearby office building parking lots to accommodate the new residents. This would also add much-needed housing in the southeastern parts of El Segundo. Placing residents closer to local businesses would help boost foot traffic in the area, increase customer activity and reduce carbon emissions. By decreasing distances to workplaces. By encouraging walking and biking over driving, this plan would help reduce traffic and promote sustainable, community-oriented lifestyles.
Secondly, we are proposing adding biking stations in areas with high foot traffic like the Point near Topgolf and the Plaza with Raising Cane's.
Adicionando estacionamentos de bike eletrônicos encorajaria a mobilidade e atividade física. Expandir a infraestrutura de bike ajudará a reduzir a quantidade de poluição e reduzir as emissões de carbono. Estas bicicletas atrairão jovens empresas e turistas a usar bicicletas em vez de Uber ou alugar um carro. Além disso, a infraestrutura de bike apoia a saúde pública promovendo estilos de vida ativos e fornecendo opções de transporte acessíveis para pessoas de todos os ages sem acesso a um carro. Eles também abrem oportunidades para programas educacionais sobre segurança de bicicleta e manutenção, forçando a envolvimento da comunidade. Nós também envisionamos um sistema de veículos lentos, como coletas elétricas e bicicletas de golf. Estas novas opções seriam um jeito divertido e baixo em emissão para ir por aí. Para anunciar isso, nós designaremos rutas específicas com sinais claros e estacionamentos de carregamento em áreas populares, como o Point, Topgolf, a Plaza com Raising Canes e o Cinema West Movie Theater Plaza. Para promover esses veículos, podemos lançar campanhas de branding local onde cada veículo é anunciado por locais comerciais que o patrocinam. Estes patrocinadores podem ser apresentados em mídias sociais, sites web de cidade e materiais de eventos locais, ajudando as empresas a ganhar visibilidade enquanto sustentando transporte verde. Finalmente, para conectar vizinhanças, nós propomos um sistema de subterrâneo gratuito ou de custo baixo. Este subterrâneo elétrico passaria entre zonas de uso mixto, corredores de negócios e parques de comunidade, reduzindo o pressão de parques, reduzindo a congestão e fazendo El Segundo mais pacífico e bem-vindo para os visitantes e residentes. Para aproveitar as empresas locais, nós sugerimos organizar eventos charitablemente, mas entretenidos que atraiam turistas enquanto fortalecer a identidade da comunidade de El Segundo. Esses eventos poderiam girar perto do proposto de zonas de uso mixto para consistentemente trazer pessoas para áreas desenvolvidas. Nós podemos colaborar com locais comerciais para patrocinação, donações, contribuições em kind ou boas, boas cadeiras e sinais enquanto oferecendo uma exposição valiosa em retorno. Esses eventos podem reais fundos para causas locais, escolas ou iniciativas de sustentabilidade, enquanto também dando a turistas e residentes formas divertidas e engajadoras de explorar a cidade. O resultado é mais fluxo de viagem, aumento de rendimentos comerciais e uma comunidade mais forte e conectada que os turistas e novos residentes querem fazer parte de.
Este é o futuro do Distrito de Negócios de El Segundo. Aqui está um quadro do Distrito de Negócios de El Segundo em uma mapa da cidade de El Segundo. O nosso plano é mudar as leis de zonagem desta área para revender um antigo edifício que escolhemos. Aqui estão algumas fotos de seis mil e cinquenta, norte de Sepulveda Boulevard. Ele está localizado no Distrito de Negócios e tem a reputação de ser abandonado por muitos anos agora. O nosso plano é converter este edifício em um complexo residencial para cumprir as demandas de viviagem dos funcionários de El Segundo. Este é um resumo rápido do nosso plano e os passos que faremos para melhorar o Distrito de Negócios. Após conduzir nossa pesquisa, muitos dos pessoas que nós pôdemos gostariam de morar mais perto do seu espaço de trabalho. Adicionar viviagem para o peste de PCH ajudaria a resolver esse problema, como muitos negócios estão nesse área. Além disso, cinquenta e oito ponto oito por cento de pessoas tiveram uma reação positiva a um apartamento sendo construído lá. A segunda etapa de nosso plano envolve mudar as leis de zonagem de El Segundo. Atualmente, os usos residenciais não são permitidos para o peste de PCH. Para construir o proposto de apartamento, nós teríamos que mudar as leis de zonagem para permitir construção residencial na zona de CO2. Existem duas companhias de apartamento que nós recomendamos para a conversão. Hackman Capital Partners é reconhecido por convertir locais industriais em espaços criativos. O projeto de oitenta e oito Douglas Street transformou uma trinta acresca antiga sede de aeroespacia em um branco, um ofício de office preservando elementos arquiteturais únicos como telhados de cinquenta metros e ilhares de brilhos. Griffin Capital. Griffin Capital tem tomado medidas significativas de desenvolvimento de projetos em El Segundo, especialmente na Grand Avenue e Kansas Street. Seus planos incluem repurposar estruturas existentes e construir novos edifícios para criar ambientes de office dinâmicos. Os proprietários atual de este edifício são o Vela Group. O nosso plano é entusiasmar os desenvolvedores para vender o espaço de edifício a uma empresa de apartamento. O Vela Group comprou o propriedade em dois mil e nozeve. maneiras possíveis de incentivarmos a transformação do propriedade em apartamentos é ter taxas de desconto relacionadas com a quantidade de pessoas vivendo lá. As empresas são a chave para gerar rendimentos de impostos locais para cidades. Integrando as empresas em nosso edifício não apenas afetaria os residentes potenciais, mas também traria em conta rendimentos de impostos locais que seriam investidos em volta da cidade de El Segundo. O Coffee Bean Tea Leaf está ativamente expandindo em todo o país. Eles têm locais previously abertos em apartamentos complexos, mas em forma de francesas não tradicionais. Estes incluem cafés de store em escala menor. Considerando a renda anual média e a taxa de imposto local da cidade de El Segundo, a comunidade beneficiaria em suma de setecentos e cincocentos dólares anualmente, o que fazê-lo uma adição ideal para o novo complexo de apartamento. Para a segunda parte de nosso projeto, nós focamos em melhorar o aspecto de transporte em e em torno do Distrito de Negócios. E aqui está um resumo rápido do plano que faremos para alcançar isso. Nossa primeira e principal ideia é implementar um sistema de subterrâneo do Pacífico Coast a downtown El Segundo. Isso faria melhor disponibilidade de parques de黄昏 para os residentes e funcionários, reduzir a congestão em áreas principais da cidade e trazer mais clientes para as empresas de rua Main Street ao permitir uma acessibilidade mais fácil. Após nossos dados, sessenta e quatro ponto três por cento dos participantes considerariam usar um subterrâneo citywide. Um participante até recorreu a um subterrâneo anterior que ele disse que era conveniente. Ter um subterrâneo permitir aos usuários evitar parques e também limitar as emissões de CO2, o que faria a cidade mais eco-friendly. Este é um breve quadro de uma linha de transporte publico que permitiria a residência de El Segundo ir para o Distrito de Negócios e áreas residenciais. Isso permitiria a residência ir para seus empregos em cidade sem seus carros e também permitiria a empregados em essas empresas explorarem o downtown El Segundo e os negócios e restaurantes. Para a proposta de serviço de subterrâneo, nós recomendamos considerar a reabilitação de um transporte vazio para empresas de transporte bem estabelecidas e reputáveis que têm feito trabalho para cidades menores. Finalmente, aqui estão algumas fontes que usamos para a pesquisa. Muito obrigado.
Smokey Hollow's limited zoning and infrastructure hinders growth, lack of housing, transit and sustainability planning. Nossa missão é criar um amplo, preparado plano de rezerar para transformar Smokey Hollow em um lugar inclusivo, sustentável e vibrante para 2045. Para nossa missão, isso permitirá desenvolvimento de uso mixto, incluindo viviagem acessível, melhor infraestrutura verde, melhor opções de transporte e preservar sua identidade histórica e cultural.
Box em vermelho são os parâmetros atual de Smokey Hollow. Box em vermelho é o lugar que seria afetado por as mudanças propostas. Estas mudanças propostas se aderecem à distância mínima de duzentos metros entre refinérios e certos tipos de negócios, com as mudanças propostas ocorrendo a sete mil de quilômetros do refinério.
Um dos melhores modos de ajudar o ambiente é usando painel de sol. Eles reduzem os custos de elétrica e reduzem os gases de greenhouse, o que faz uma grande diferença longe-termo. Outro movimento inteligente é a economia de água usando plantas resistentes a derrame, sistemas de água de chuva e ficheiros de fluxo baixo para economizar água e manter melhor. E então há edifícios de aldeia, adicionando jardins de arco ou plantas em paredes para esquentar as coisas, limpar o ar e fazer as cidades se sentir mais conectadas à natureza.
Um grande objetivo em rezerar Smokey Hollow é reconectar a comunidade. Nós podemos fazer isso através de anunciar locais comerciais, hostear eventos culturais e criar espaços compartilhados como parques e centros de comunidade. Nós também queremos apoiar artistas e vendedores locais, especialmente criadores baseados em El Segundo e, mais importante, convidar a envolvimento da comunidade em decisões de planeamento para garantir que a área reflete as pessoas que vivem lá.
Industrial Smokey Hollow é um local histórico em El Segundo e é hora de preservar sua legaça enquanto abençoando o futuro. Apertando para o look industrial posterior, designando marcas, repurposando edifícios e adicionando sinais informativos, nós honramos seu passado industrial. A participação da comunidade e histórias orais, nós criamos um distrito vibrante, redentor e herança. Rezerar significa preservar a história e construir o futuro.
Transporte em El Segundo tem sido muito lento nos últimos anos. Estações metrô e transporte público têm sido muito limitados pelo dia e podem ser significativamente melhorados. Algumas maneiras que podemos melhorar isso são focando em projetos de reabilitação de pavimentos e fazendo transporte mais conectado de LAX e para as piscinas. Isso melhora a acessibilidade e a atracção a El Segundo após um longo dia na praia. No geral, a transportação será muito mais eficiente e trará muitos novos visitantes.
O maior problema com rezerar Smokey Hollow é encontrar parques de黄昏. O espaço é limitado e a maioria dos lugares é privado. Uma solução inteligente é um acordo compartilhado de parques de黄昏. Os residentes podem usar lotes de negócios à noite quando estão vazios. Nós também podemos adicionar permisos residenciais para reservar espaços de rua à noite.
Olá, sou Lucas.
E sou Aiden.
O nosso foco principal foi priorizar a viviagem zero e implementar soluções energéticas conscientes.
Nós também abordamos as infraestruturas-chave, como a iluminação smarter e a expansão solar.
Enquanto trabalhamos para reforçar a infraestrutura de El Segundo, é crucial considerar como a alimentar. Começando com a energia solar. Começamos com o Y. Califórnia está já enfrentando demanda de energia e frequência de ondas de calor. A energia solar pode ajudar El Segundo com custos de utilidade baixos e longo-termo resiliência ambiental. Para El Segundo realmente abençoar a energia solar, precisamos modernizar as leis de zonagem. Ao fazer isso, nós imprimiremos edifícios locais para requirecer energia solar para todos os desenvolvimentos e estabelecer um processo de aprovação rápido para projetos de solar residenciais e comerciais. Mas o que sobre os edifícios que já temos? Muitos deles foram construídos antes da energia solar ser incluída. A boa notícia é que podemos reconstruí-los sem cavar o banco. 利用 partnerships, empresas privadas ajudam a pagar por edifícios públicos como escolas, cidadãos ou bibliotecas. E em retorno, eles podem obter incentivos fisérios ou benefícios de branding. Ao implementar essas estratégias, podemos fazer a energia solar acessível em todos os cintos de El Segundo.
Algumas ruas em El Segundo ficam completamente escuros à noite, o que causa preocupações de segurança para os pilotos e pedestrians. áreas como Ugalithus Drive, Arena Street e Sycamore Avenue precisam de iluminação melhor, especialmente perto de parques, escolas e interseções onde a visibilidade mais importante. Nossa solução: luzes LED activadas por movimento. Estas luzes inteligentes ficam dimas ou off até detectarem movimento, economizando energia enquanto iluminando quando importa. Elas usam menos elétrica, reduzem a poluição de luz e duram mais. E porque elas iluminam com movimento, naturalmente reduzem o crime e melhoram a segurança. Para apenas essas três ruas, cerca de vinte luzes são necessárias. O custo básico entre doze mil e vinte e dois mil, com custo total de instalação variando de quatro mil a cem mil. A cidade precisará de permisos e assistência de Southern California Edison, a local empresa de power, para conectar e instalar a iluminação. Nos dados do nosso pô conclui que a maior parte de residentes de El Segundo estão a favor dessas luzes de rua. Com luzes smarter de El Segundo ficam seguros, sustentáveis e comunitário durante o dia e noite.
Para garantir um futuro mais sustentável para El Segundo e seus residentes, nós devemos adotar viviagem zero. Edifícios que gerem tanto energia quanto consumem anualmente através de fontes renováveis, como a energia solar. Isso significa baixar impostos de utilidade, menos emissões e uma comunidade mais saudável. Um recente pô mostra que setenta e um por cento de residentes apoiam exigir novos apartamentos para cumprir os padrões de zero net. Com mais do meio aberto a viviagem em um, se possível. E aqui em cima vocês verão o que esses residentes estão procurando em um apartamento de zero net. Para fazer essa visão acessível, nós propomos exigir todos os desenvolvimentos residenciais sob o plano de rezerar para cumprir os padrões de zero net através de codes de edifícios atualizados, incentivos como rebaixos estatais e federais, se aplicável, e streamlining de permis com procuração em conjunto. Estes passos vão permitir um crescimento sustentável, reduzir custos de utilidade e reduzir o arrastre de carbono de El Segundo, posicionando a cidade como líder em energia clean e eficiente.
Ok, perguntas para a fase cinco. Vamos começar com o jurado e vamos para a frente. Não há perguntas, tudo bem. Não há perguntas. Grupo fácil, tarde do dia. Stefan, nunca me deixou. Vamos.
Eu realmente gosto da, eu acho que essa ideia que o grupo realmente levou e vocês levaram muito bem essa ideia de sustentabilidade. Eu realmente gosto do que você fez com as luzes de rua e os painel de sol. Eu achei que era muito criativo. Só uma coisa, e é mais um tema geral vague que eu percebi. Eu vi vocês usar muitos negócios privados para fazer as obras para vocês. Você está usando transporte através de meios privados. Tendo um grupo privado remodelar aquele edifício lá. Eu vejo muita dinheiro sendo pego, mas eu não vejo muita dinheiro saindo em renda em termos de El Segundo. Vocês têm algo a ver com isso?
Sim, bem, nós focamos mais em coordenar o transfere. Então para a transportação, nós queríamos coordenar um negócio entrando e gerenciando a transportação em toda a cidade. E então para como o plano de viviagem que fizemos sobre Sepulveda, nós também queríamos uma empresa privada entrar e fazer isso também. Então nós estávamos menos focados na cidade fazendo muito do trabalho, mais assim como coordenando o transfere e então aquilo trazendo em renda dos pessoas que iriam para isso.
Esse é um pouco alto para mim, mas a iniciativa solar de Califórnia é capaz de fornecer incentivos fisérios para, como, residentes de cidades sob certos, como, empresas, como Southern California Edison, que é a empresa de power por aqui. Então eles poderiam poder oferecer, como, subsídios e, como...
No mesmo tema sobre os painel de sol, como você espera encorajar os proprietários que já foram, talvez, oferecerem incentivos fisérios? Como nós educaremos os residentes que não, como, que não entendem o sol ou os benefícios que ele pode fornecer?
No nosso pô, nós reunimos dados de residentes e alguns deles não eram tão open para a ideia de adicionar a seu lugar atual de residência. Muitos deles estavam votando se nós adicionássemos, como as outras grupos mencionadas, como edifícios de uso mixto e outras coisas, como exigindo esses edifícios para cumprir padrões de zero net e padrões de energia solar para que não打扰amos os residentes atualmente que não estão interessados nos novos ideias de sol.
Eu acho, bem, como em geral, é muito caro para, como, alguém entrando em El Segundo para, como, pagar o item de zero net. E eu sinto que isso pode ser algo que poderia desencorajar uma nova empresa para construir aqui. Você tem uma ideia de como?
Esse foi um grande comentário. Eu não estou muito segura sobre esse parte. Às vezes, havia, como, empresas privadas e partnerships que podiam fazer a viviagem zero mais acessível.
Perguntas? Aí você vai.
Vocês têm um plano muito confiante para, como, sustentabilidade da cidade. Quais são seus planos para, como, Chevron, fazer objeções a qualquer coisa que você está fazendo?
Ok, é eu, suponho. Quais preocupações você acha que Chevron faria? Ou estou não autorizada para fazer outra pergunta? Eu não sei.
Está tudo bem. A coisa é que você está apresentando um monte de ideias diferentes para produção de energia além de combustíveis fósseis, que é o que faz Chevron. Então, eu quero dizer, eu tenho medo que essa foi a sua intenção de tirar isso de Chevron, mas mais provavelmente é o que vai resultar de alguma forma ou outra. Ou pelo menos, então você tem uma ideia de o que, se fazer algum tipo de objeção a isso?
Eu não realmente, eu não pensei em fazer objeção a isso. Eu estava principalmente pensando em, como, o, o área residencial, porque era o meu grupo, como, El Segundo.
Eu estava pensando nisso, mas as objeções da empresa, é uma empresa privada, então eles não podem, eu quero dizer, eles não podem objetar o que nós queremos fazer, mas eles não têm a sua opinião sobre o que a cidade quer construir. Então, basicamente, isso é como, não é realmente nosso problema porque eles são uma empresa versus uma cidade pública. Como, eles podem não gostar tanto porque isso pega deles. Mas novamente, privado versus, como, nossa cidade pública, como, eles não podem realmente ter a sua opinião sobre o que construirmos, exceto que, como, você sabe, impede na sua área, mas estamos focando mais em El Segundo.
Falando como um verdadeiro advogado. Bem feito. Alguém com perguntas a seguir? Excelente trabalho, pessoal. Muito obrigado.
Acho que devemos dar um minuto ou dois e dar às lideres da classe tempo para consultar e discutir. Sim, como um, quatro, três, dois, cinco. Cada um de vocês recebe o voto, sim. Estou girando com seus votos agora.
Mestre do Senhor, nós temos consenso de consenso para receber e enviar essas apresentações?
Espera, o jurado tem uma comentário. Desculpe-me. Um momento, eu ainda não entendi.
Obrigado. Nós temos consenso de consenso para receber e enviar essas apresentações?
Nós temos consenso para receber e enviar? Sim, nós o fazemos. Muito obrigado. Agora vamos tomar uma breve pausa para deliberar. Okay, now we'll take a short break to deliberate. Is your, is your intention to read these aloud in a dramatic fashion?
Yes. Yes, the city clerk is telling.
Before we get to the reveal, let's take a moment for city council and staff comments about the presentations in general. And as always, we start with our newest council member, Keldorf, to lead us off.
I'm super impressed with everything that you all did. I think it's been said a number of times, but we are paying somebody almost a million dollars to do this over an 18-month period. So it's a huge project. There are pieces of all of your projects that I feel very confident will be incorporated into our new update. Loved activating Imperial Avenue. Love the idea of activating our civic plaza out there. It's something that we've already talked about. El Segundo After Dark. Again, pieces of, I think you all incorporated this idea of transportation, connecting the east side of El Segundo with the west side of El Segundo. Love that. The one thing that I would emphasize if you were to do a part two is to think about our job up here and the job of this rezone is to create opportunity for developers to come in and, and do different things in our city. We actually can only work with or build on things that are owned by the city of El Segundo. So I like the idea throughout of incentivizing developers, consolidating lots, things that make this more feasible. But all in all, again, super impressed. I think the future is bright, and I am excited to see what El Segundo looks like 30 years from now. So thank you.
I was the one who said that this was going to be way too big of a project for you, and apparently I was wrong. It's an unbelievable job. I'm, I'm completely blown away because I, I actually went in and spoke to each one of your classes for about an hour, and at that time, you were all trying to figure out how in the world you were going to pull this all together. And when I left there, I'm like, I don't know how this is going to go. You did an incredible job. I cannot believe you all, all five of you pulled this together in a, in a 15-minute block. So congratulations, extremely well done, and thank you for doing it.
Yeah, I think since 2016, I've had the opportunity to watch these. You guys by far had the hardest project to do, no doubt. It's really interesting because if you think about the planning and the policy, some really good ideas. I agree with council member Keldorf. I love the El Segundo After Dark. I love the Aerospace Museum. We already have, Aerospace Corporation has a small museum now. We've actually had alum of SpaceX say, "We need to memorialize the greatness of this town, everything that has happened to this town. GPS invented here. We were instrumental in the World War II efforts, let's, let's bring that to life." So I love those ideas. To council member Keldorf's part, it's not enough though to create a policy and a plan. So a perfect example is several of you mentioned Pacific Coast Commons. 260-something units approved by the city council. First time we've ever approved housing on PCH. 15% affordable, hasn't been built yet. Anyone know what the status of that project is? Why might it not be built yet? Because you have to make the economics make sense. And so the capital markets have gone sideways and they can't make that project pencil. So it's one thing to set the policy and create incentives that are in, but we got to have the, developers have to have the right financial incentives and economic markets to make it work. So something to think about as well. But anyway, you guys did a great job, it was great to be here. I enjoyed it. You guys are going to do great things, can't wait to see what you all do in the future. Thank you. Yeah, thank you all. Thank you for the work that you put in. You could definitely tell the amount of time that was spent on this. And if there's anything that you can take away, I, I, I hope it's the realization that even though you're about to embark on this next chapter, right? School, careers, life, you're going to become very, very busy with what you're doing. Take the time to look around you and where you are. You all have something really important that you can give back to the place you live, to your community, to make it better. And I hope this exercise shows you that when it comes down to it, a city is nothing more than the people who live there. And so whatever skills and talents that you have, and you're all very talented, obviously, make sure to give some of that back wherever it is you end up, okay? And thank you again for taking the time to come talk to us. This is one of the, the fun events we get to do every year, so thank you so much.
Please.
I was completely blown away to steal what council member Jeru said. You guys did an amazing job. And I would really like to have you consider future careers as you go off to college. Some people might not think, hey, what about planning? What about public works? What about public service? And whether you're volunteering your time or you do this for a living, I think there are many of you who would really benefit the career if you chose that path. We could use great thinkers like you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Gast, for, just incredible.
I'd just like to add, I mean, obviously, everything that the council and the clerk shared, I echo. Certainly unbelievable job. I was, I actually was kind of with Lance saying, how are they going to do this? And in fact, yesterday, met with a handful of students, I'm going, you do realize this is tomorrow. And, but you really pulled it together. But the, the other piece I really appreciate that wasn't mentioned is the time you took to think about the, the input and the, the impact of what the private sector does i- in, in, in supporting this plan. Because, you know, we're half, the government is half the equation in, in terms of building out a, 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 a city that, that works. And I think your analysis of including the private sector and how they can impact this, this plan, it was, was really significant, and I appreciated that.
Alright, and with those words, I believe it's time, with a small drum roll, to hear the results of your hard work and efforts.
Alright, just as a reminder, the winning class gets 100 out of 100 for the project, and unfortunately, I have to cook for them all. So that's their reward. So let's see what happens here. First vote is for period one. Second vote is for period five. Third vote is for period five. Period five. Period five. Period two. You're on the board, period two. Period one. Period one. Is there a comeback? Period one. See what we got here. Period five. Period four. You're on the board. Period four, period three for this one. Period three. Period one. Also trying to check that they didn't vote for their own. Period one. Period five. Period one. Period one, I only have to cook for 19 people, so. Period two is on the board again. Period four. Period five. And period three. Read, read out, you got to read them.
Period one, there are seven votes. For period two, there are two votes. For period three, there are three votes. Period four has two votes, and period five has seven votes as well.
Alright. So they can only vote on periods one and five now.
So city council, you guys need to, you get one vote.
Awesome.
You guys can go to your chambers if you want to. Hey, now you can vote for your own project though. Now, period one or five, you can vote for your own project. Don't cancel each other out, but you can, but if you're honest and going to get better project, you might not, you're in period five. Period five, you guys need to sit down, where's the votes? Period five, you guys need to converse, here's your. Yes, one vote, that's why you need to converse. Here's the shoes in the back there, that's your one vote. Are they what? No, they're debating back there because they only get one vote. Second round, they only get one vote. I, I'm grading on a different thing than they're grading on. I would have picked a higher score. To be honest. Well, I, we look at some a different perspective. They are, they all seem okay. They survived the one vote. Alright, they'll take my one vote, me two. Ballots are missing. You should have six, technically there could be another tie. You got six ballots. Alright, in the tie-breaking round. First ballot is for period five. Second ballot is for period five. Third ballot is for period one. This ends up as a tie. Period five. So one, you got to get both of these. Period one. I don't know what to do if it hits a tie. I can't cook for two cl- that's 60 people.
I hear you.
You have no idea what you're doing to me, that's 50 people. Alright, we got to figure out a way to do this. What's that? So should I take out period one and five's vote and see where we're at?
He's saying take out.
It's still a tie.
He's saying take council out.
I like the council's input.
Four.
Why don't we just have the city council vote this time? Why don't each of the city council members?
You've got four of us.
And, and the clerk and the city manager.
Now you got six.
There's going to be six of you, but I don't think we'll end up with a tie.
Alright, let's go.
So all of you, maybe just write on the back of your, I don't, I'll, I'll get back these.
You guys got a pen?
All this rationalizing. Alright, here we go, third round of voting. This should do it though, I'm, I'm. Period one. Period one. Period one. Period one, that's enough votes.
Let's vote again.
Congratulations, where's my period one? Congratulations, all of you. Period one. Yeah, that's period one. Congratulations. Alright, how about I give all of the projects an A?
Hey, here you go. Before we go. Can we get a photograph too?
Thank you to the city council, city clerk, city manager, Barbara Vaz, Messiah, for helping out with all the planning with me. Thank all the department heads, wherever you are, you'll see this on TV hopefully. And we'll look forward to next year. You guys have a great rest of your day. You guys have a great rest of your day.
Fantastic.